Thank you, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's school committee meeting of November 6th, 2013. Could you please join me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is hearing of visitors. I've been informed that we do not have anyone signed in, so we will move to the second item, which is what we call the consent agenda. It is basically routine business that the school committee ratifies through a motion and a vote, and at this time, we allow any school committee member who may want to exclude anything for discussion to do so at this time. Is there anyone that would like to take an item out of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
With one exclusion, a donation from Costco. Okay, so items A, B, C.
Should I amend my motion?
Please, Mrs. Joyce.
I'll amend my motion to exclude item E.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. All in favor? Okay. Acceptance of donation from Costco. Madam Superintendent?
You know, once again, on behalf of the Brockton Public Schools, I want to thank Matt Alstine, who, with the Costco folks, were able to put together a number of backpacks. And this is important to the Brockton Public Schools because all children want to start the school year with a new backpack, with all of the supplies and materials that they need to start the year anew.
And to have, like every child, you know, something new, something exciting to begin their school year. So I want to thank them on behalf of the numbers and numbers of children that were able to benefit from having a new backpack.
Wonderful. Thank you. Very generous as usual for many of the local businesses around the area. Would someone please make a motion to accept?
Motion to accept?
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. Second, Mr. Sullivan. All in favor? Next item, report of superintendent. We are going to take an item out of order that's under new business, and that is the Brockton High School Red Sox Science Contest presentation, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Healy, who is going to present this issue or item.
Thank you, Mr. High's Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank-
Mr. Healy has lost his voice, so please-
I've lost my voice after yesterday, and to some of my colleagues, it's probably a good thing for them anyways. All right, I would like to thank my earnest colleagues, the members of this most august party, and I do use that term quite loosely, for the privilege of presenting this, the winners of this contest, the prizes. I would especially like to thank Professor Shapiro, Chair of the Science Department at BHS, Mr. Perkins, Associate Principal, and especially BHS Principal Ms. Sharon Walden, a woman of keen intellect and poise, gone and from her education, remember that, ladies and gentlemen. The genesis for this contest, Science and Education, comes via some one-sided agreement between a dear friend of mine, Dr. David Levitt, and me. After the first game of the series, I left a voicemail with Dr. Levitt in which I sang, "Na na na na, na 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 na." Hey, well, I sang it much better than, "Hey, hey, hey, goodbye." We conversed in a peculiar vernacular, and he called me back and said, "Hey babe, what's up with all the sodium you're tossing at me?" And luckily, I didn't have coffee, and I caught on right away. N-A is the symbol from periodic table for sodium. So I said to him, I said, "Hey babe, I just sang you the sodium song." So he says, "Well, I'm gonna get a chance to sing it right back at you next game," which he did. So after a few laughs, I said to him, I said, "That'd be a great, a great contest for the kids at the high school," and he agreed. And I said, "Can you help me with that?" And at that point, David said that the sodium question would be quite easy for the kids, but he said, "You should pose it somehow to bring in the sister elements, which is K, potassium." Mr. Walden, Ms. Walden, and Mr. Perkins liked the idea and handed the task to Professor Shapiro to form the questions, which he did quite, quite well, I think. And to my surprise, enjoyed, after less than two days that the contest ran because of the speed with which we dispensed with the Cardinals, we had 67 correct constats inside of 125. The committee was then faced with a conundrum. We purchased out of pocket one sign per Doye bat, and faced with buying another 66, well, that wasn't in the game plan. So I then contacted a friend of mine, a friend of BHS as well, Ms. Libby Siskin, who was born here in Brockton and owns a lovely eclectic boutique store in the Brighton section of Boston, Rhode Island. And she recommended licensed earrings, necklaces, and hats, and she sold the items to the committee for nearly cost, most generous gesture. Dr. Levitt was born and raised in St. Louis. He has a, he has a master's and a PhD from Boston University. That's how he met him when he was living in Brighton, in chemical engineering, so he's a learned man. His dad actually was the, was the team doctor for the Cards in the late 70s and 80s and 90s, so he actually has a World Series ring. You wouldn't want to wear it every day, your finger would fall off. In any event, without further ado, I'd like to bring forward the lucky gentleman who, out of the 67, his name is drawn to get the bat, because folks, remember that. Hard work is important, but there is some luck in life, so Nicholas Lopez, please come forward. Nicholas is a 10th grader, and I think that's fantastic. I asked Nicholas, as he gets up, if he's got a poison, he's gonna do that Dustin thing. Okay, we have cellar under the windows that are here tonight modeling the gifts that they received. If you all want to come forward, if you wish, please do so, wearing your swag. Why not?
Some of them took the earrings as gifts.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Wear as gifts, okay, cool. All right, so we had necklaces, and there were some wristlets, and there were hats. So if you guys wanted to introduce yourselves, please do so, tell us what we're doing.
I'm Matt Meck, I'm 11th grader, Brockton High.
11th grader, can you love?
I am Shmari Ford-Deverie, and I'm 10th grader at Brockton High.
10th grader? Okay, can you love?
I am Sidney Roller, also a senior at Brockton High.
Excellent. Yeah, folks.
I'm Brendan Beas, I'm 10th grader at Brockton High.
10th grader, can you love?
I'm Katherine Lewis, and I'm 11th grader at Brockton High.
Love it.
I'm Elizabeth, I'm 11th grader.
Love it.
Christopher, 10th grader.
10th.
Victoria Hassan, 10th grader.
10th grade, Victoria.
Sir.
What's the name of your career, 10th grader?
11th, 10th grader. Can you love?
Angelica Vaughn, 10th grader.
Okay.
Christopher Vaughn, 10th grader.
Michael Cruz, 10th grader.
Tyler Hunt, 10th grader.
Calvin Yan.
That's great. How about a round of applause for all these kids? Good stuff. Yeah, actually, you know what? Let's have a picture up here. What do you mean, oh god, come on, come on.
You get to take pictures, and you may reelect.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, yeah, everybody come up, yeah, yeah. Right here. Put Nicholas in the front, right in the middle, in between, right in between, there you go. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I love it, look at this.
All right, some of you guys kneel down, come down, some of you guys kneel down.
Good idea.
All right, a few guys kneel down, a few guys kneel down. Let's come to the guys, let's have the guys kneel down. All right, put on, if you got your hats, put 'em on.
You've got the bats.
All right, make sure we can see the bat, and you don't have to do the Dustin Perdoy thing right now.
Can you come in? Kneel down in the front so we get everybody. All right, guys.
Hold on, Aldo, one more.
Is this Olivia? Come on in, Olivia.
Come on, we'll put you right in front.
You're the last one, so you get to go right in the front.
Right in the middle.
All right, that's great, okay, folks. All right, guys, we're gonna sit down? Let's sit down, sit down. I should have been an educator. In any event, I'd like to just mention about Dave and his dad, my friend Dave. When he was floundering as an undergraduate student, his dad sat him down and said to him, "David, the more alphabet beside your name, the more, the more green you'll have in your bank account, and the less hard you'll have to work as you get older, and the more you can do for society going forward." So remember that, ladies and gentlemen. You know, here in Brockton, we're quick with accolades for academic achievement, as well we should, but this committee especially believes in promoting those same accolades for our scholars, so that's important to me. All right, hey, I'm gonna claw, I didn't, I didn't tell the vice chair this, but I'm gonna do this anyways. I made a rhyme. Kids like to rhyme. All right, ready? I know, I know you are, I know you are. Boxer Braun didn't see the dawn of a Big Three championship year, but the hard-working boxer brain will always gain and attain each and every year.
We are always proud of our students, especially when we have them come up and display for us their, their smarts with figuring out Mr. Healy's, I would say, formula, scientific formula. But tonight, if you would like to stay, you're welcome to, but if you'd like to go home and do your homework, you're welcome to leave now, too. So whatever you kids would like to do at this time, feel free. You can either leave or stay. Well, I'm gonna basically turn it over to you, and then you pull it out.
I'll pull him up right after this.
On the agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, I'd like to start the evening with our report from our Brockton High School student representative, Jessica Freeborn. And Jessica, you're off to, is it jazz tonight afterwards?
Jazz band.
Jazz band, so she's a very busy young lady.
Okay, so last week, on Wednesday, October 30th, Brockton High hosted Halloween Hallway in our first floor core hallways. And what it is, is pretty much it's hosted by several clubs at Brockton High. We all like get together and we plan within our clubs for a couple weeks to decorate the core hallways for Halloween. And students like in the elementary range from Brockton get to come, and they get to trick or treat through the hallways. And there were two hallways set up. It was like the candy fun hallway and then the scary hallway. And those are the two different hallways we had open. And the students at Brockton High got to hand out candy, or we had a reading going on for Halloween favorites for the kids. And we also had crafts, painting pumpkins, and we had a bake sale set up by the students as well. And that was definitely a hit this year because we had almost 1,000 people in attendance. So it was great, and the kids really enjoyed it, so it was something we all got to give back to the community at Brockton High. So it was, it was a lot of fun. I was there in student council and Boxer Buddies and just a lot of different clubs. So that was really fun. And then, as well, at BHS, we have college fairs and representatives from several different colleges visiting our school weekly to give students, usually juniors, seniors, but for all grades, like the opportunity to start really focusing on the future and just like learning about and considering all the options there really is out there. So that's happening. As well, MCAS Help After School for Students has started up. It's preparing for the MCAS. It's, I want to say weekly, but I'm not completely sure. And that's started up, so that's good with MCAS coming up for sophomores, and retakes have already started, so that's happening. And coming up on Friday, we have the Veterans Day Assembly, which is consisting of the Advanced Concert Band, we're performing some songs, presentations are being made, and JRTC members will be there. And the assembly is for honoring and paying our respects to those who have served our country, because as we know, Monday is Veterans Day, which is also the parade in Brockton, where JRTC will be there and the marching band will be there, so that's what's happening on Friday. Yeah, any questions?
Jessica, thank you so much. Very informative. I will tell you, the night of your Halloween Hallway was the last night of my listening tour at West Middle School, and parents had been there and were saying what a great event it was for the community, for their children. I want to publicly thank Diane Davis, I see her in the audience, the Boxer Buddies. We had, we had gotten a note, an email saying, you know, we would like people to donate candy, so I right away started to ask about the donation, and Diane made a suggestion that maybe the superintendent should give pencils with a poem attached for the kids in the district. The Boxer Buddies helped me out with that. It's so great to see the inclusiveness of our students at the high school, our Boxer Buddies, everybody's involved for a wonderful event.
It was great.
So thank you, and thank you for bringing the Veterans Day celebration to our attention, and it's certainly worthy to honor our veterans as you do each year.
Just very briefly, that was a wonderful presentation, and it occurred to me that anybody watching this on television, any parents, you just got what your kid probably shoved way down in the bottom of his or her backpack and didn't know anything about, so thank you. You just, we just summarized a bunch of really good information that comes probably every day from the high school to you via backpack and never really gets there, so.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Jessica.
Next item, Madam Superintendent?
I'd like to take out of order, we have the district review presentation, and those of you who heard me speak at the last school committee meeting, we were lucky enough to be chosen by our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to go through a process very seriously called a district review. The district review will be happening in our district November 18th through the 20th. We have Mr. John Roper here this evening. He is the district review coordinator for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We had a meeting, I believe it was a week ago, a pre-review to prepare our district to make sure that it is productive for the time that our partners are in the district, and Mr. Roper is going to be presenting to you tonight, so you can hear what will be happening during those four days. So, welcome to Brockton.
Thank you so much. And ladies and gentlemen of the school committee, thank you all very much for inviting me down. I'd like to explain to you a little bit about what the district review process is all about, and kind of give you an idea of what we're able to do and what we're not able to do. First of all, the district review is actually going to happen here in Brockton. Very short time, actually. Let's see here. Well, all right. The district review is an opportunity for the department to come in and see if we can provide some assistance. Now, you've been working with people from the department for a little while now to provide assistance. We're kind of the data arm of the department to be able to help them to do that for you. First of all, we will be hoping to tell the story of the Brockton Public Schools. I've spent many years in education myself. I remember for many years, I see the buses pick up the youngsters in the morning, drop them off in school, return them home in the afternoon, and mom and dad say, "How did everything go today?" And the answer is, "Okay, everything was good, we're fine." So, and that's all the information you get. We all know that there are a number of things that happen, and every, every decision that gets made in this room, in the administrative offices, in the classrooms, have an impact on student achievement. And that's what we're here to help you, to tell folks about. So the situation is, we will send in a group of six people. The six people that we're sending are all experts in school management. They're people who have served long, successful careers as superintendents, as principals, as curriculum coordinators, student support coordinators. They're folks who understand what good practice is in public school system. They'll be coming here, they're going to look at the city of Brockton and the Brockton Public Schools together, and they're going to use an organizing structure. They're going to look at six different areas. The six areas are leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction. I'm not sure my PowerPoint's gonna be working much tonight. However, I think I'll just dispense with that. So curriculum and instruction, leadership and governance, student assessment, human resources, no, thank you, human resources and professional development, student support, and finance and asset management. The district review will take place in five basic stages. The first stage takes place before the team ever arrives in Brockton. For two days, these folks will sit down in Malden, and they will go over all of the data, all of the information, everything that we know about the city of Brockton and the Brockton Public Schools. And they will become almost experts in the numbers, but we know that numbers don't tell everything. Nobody wants to have the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education making decisions based on numbers alone. So what we'll be doing is, we'll be coming to Brockton to do some interviews, to ask the people who know what's happening, what's going on, what the numbers mean. So the document analysis is a two-day process. The six folks will sit down together, they'll look, they will look collectively at all of the data, all of the information. They will begin to refine questions that will drive the interviews that happen when the team comes onsite. The second part is the part that folks will see most clearly here in Brockton. That's the onsite visit. And it's a four-day period during which the team comes in, meets with folks here in the district, and begins gathering information. It starts with an introductory meeting, during which the people on the team will listen as much as they talk. We would like to know what you want the team to look at, what kinds of things you would like us to focus on. So the team will sit down, introduce themselves, meet your people, and then they'll begin to conduct a group of interviews. Most of the interviews will be with district administrators, but we'll also ask the school committee, invite the school committee to meet with the team and answer some questions. The questions are very general, and what we're looking for is an opportunity to kind of explore the committee's relationship and its idea of what constitutes leadership and We'll look, we'll ask for interviews with school and district program leaders. We'll have a couple of interviews with teachers association. We will invite parents to join us for interviews, and we'll have a school-student interview at the high school. We'd like to invite young people to talk a little bit about how they see their school and how they find the Brockton Public Schools, particularly as far as their, the challenging level of the courses, possibly the student support programs. We'll also look for an interview with municipal officials. We'll see if we can kind of gauge a little exploration about the relationship between the district and the community. We'll do some classroom observations, and we'll probably get into most of your buildings. Principals will know when we're coming. Everybody will have identification so that you'll know who's going to be in your building in advance. They'll come in, and we'll go in groups, but we'll look at generally math, science, ELA, some special ed classes. We'll be looking to see what kinds of things are going on in the classroom. And generally, there are about, you know, 30 to 50 classrooms that we visit over the course of time. One of the things we're going to be doing is making sure that the information that we see in the documents is the same information that's driving instruction here in Brockton. We think it is, but we want to make sure. And we're also going to provide for you a separate set of eyes from outsiders, from folks who don't have quite the experience level that your administrators do. So it's nice to know that the same things that they're seeing here in the building are also the things that a group of independent examiners see when they come in to visit. So the information that we're going to gain comes from a number of sources. It will come from interviews, it will come from documents, it will come from publications, it will come from practices and observations, and it will happen at not only the school level, not only the district level, but also at the document and data level. So we'll be looking for all those different sources of information, and our intention here is to make sure that nothing goes into the report that's not triangulated. The triangulation of data is very important to us because an inaccurate report helps no one. So what we're looking to do is making sure that everything that we find out about is exactly accurate. We'll also make sure that it's accurate by providing the superintendent with a draft of the findings for factual correction, just to make sure that we haven't missed anything or misidentified anything or anyone. And by the time we're done, we think that we will have about as accurate a picture of the Brockton Public Schools as we possibly can before we leave. We'll meet with the district administrative team on that day, and we'll give them an idea of what kinds of things the department is exploring, the team is exploring. But it's not done yet. Following our four-day visit, we'll be back in Malden again. We'll go over all of that data, and we'll develop a set of findings and recommendations. The findings will be somewhere between two and 18, well, two and three indicators, findings per district standard. So it could be 18, possibly 20 bulleted facts that the team has, has found, and they won't be just neg- And they won't be just negative things. We'll celebrate some of the good things that we'll find here in Brockton, and we know there are some already. So, we'll look at all of those things, we'll give you an idea of what kinds of things there are, and they're developed by consensus. The team members sit down in Malden, and they will go over their findings, each and every one, and everyone has to be convinced that they've heard enough information to be able to say these things. So, it kind of protects everyone against inaccurate information by people who just don't know, and nobody has to know everything. So, it's a process that keeps going over and over. We call it iterative, because we keep asking questions and hoping to get the same answers. But the idea is to make sure that we are absolutely clear on what's going on. The draft refinement part of the review takes a little bit longer, and that can take up to three months, although sometimes we get the reports back in a few weeks. Depends kind of on what's in the report. We also offer, as voluntary extra services, if you will, the associate commissioner for accountability will come back when the report is complete and report to the school committee about what we've found. Not just about, "This is what the report says," but she'll kind of meter it for you so that you will have an understanding of, when our team says, "This was really pretty good here in Brockton," where that kind of falls. Because "pretty good" may be really good in terms of other districts of a similar kind. So, we'll try, we'll offer that to you if you'd like to do that. We'll also offer something that we call the next steps meeting. And that's, again, strictly voluntary. We come back after the review, after the report is ready to be published, and we'll sit down with the district leadership team, and we'll go over the report. We'll talk about what kinds of steps might wish to be, might be pursued here in Brockton. And again, as I've said earlier, our findings and recommendations are strictly recommendations for you. So it's not something that the department is requiring to be done. At our final meeting onsite, we'll have, we'll invite with us the person from the department who is most responsible for providing assistance for the Brockton Public Schools, Dr. Eve Bassett, and she'll be with us to kind of hand off accountability right into assistance. We feel like we're the eyes and ears of the department here. We're trying to provide people with a good starting point for how to better help Brockton do what Brockton has been trying to do so well for so long, and that's improve the way youngsters learn here in, here in the city. So, at that point, I think we'll, we'll be taking our leave from you, and we'll kind of watch and hope things go, go well for you. But that's really the end of the accountability arm, and from then on, it's the department's assistance group that will help provide whatever needs to be done. So, that's basically an outline of what we're going to be doing during the district review process. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to respond to them.
Is this something that's done every single year or every other year?
Not so much. The law that began the accountability process requires us to do, well, it intended us to do 40 of these a year. We've never been funded for more than 20. But of the 40, it's supposed to be half in lower-performing districts, and then the other half are supposed to be divided equally between districts which are better performing and districts which are selected at random. So we expect that at some point, every district will receive a district accountability visit. Obviously, the districts that are seeing the most challenges as far as student achievement goes are more likely to be selected, but it's going to be something that happens to everybody given enough time. Did that --
Thank you.
We promised to leave you alone for the next three years.
Well, thanks for your presentation. I do have some questions. Is this type of review required by the DESE? Is it the DESE that is actually overseeing this and managing it and running it?
As a matter of fact, one of the things, my job as a department employee is to make sure that you get the best possible team. I train the folks --
How is that --
Pardon me?
Is the same team, is it the same team that does all of the districts, or are there several teams involved?
There are about 48 people who do accountability reviews, and they do them in other states, they do them for other countries. The person who's chairing this team will be taking three-month sabbatical from us to go to Dubai and do this kind of work over there. There are certain groups of people who go into consulting because they're, well, they've gotten tired of going to night meetings. I'm sure that doesn't ring familiar with anyone here, but there are people who have spent a lot of time doing this kind of thing, and they, they go into consulting now. I train the people to make sure that they're up to date on all of the department initiatives, and there have been a number of them over the last few years. And we make sure that the group does what we say they're supposed to do. I will be here for part of the review to make sure that the folks that, that we send are not only expert, but also representing the department well.
Do we have a team that is assigned to us at this point?
Yes, you do. And you also have the opportunity to challenge anyone on the team.
Can we get a list --
A week ago, Friday, I think it was, we shared the biographies of the team members with the superintendent and the leadership team. So, at some point, if she wishes, she could --
Yeah, could you please share that with us? I'd like to end their expertise with, you know, with this, their strengths, why they're on the committee.
We even provide pictures. Sometimes names change, and --
Pictures I don't care about. Okay. And so what is the ultimate goal or outcome or result of this full review?
Our outcome is to help support the district initiatives. You folks have been doing a lot of things to help improve education in Brockton. We're going to come in, we're going to look at them, we're going to celebrate the ones that are really effective, we're going to encourage you to keep up the good work in ones that you may not have seen results with yet, but which the team identifies as really good ideas, and we'll offer you some thoughts about things that you've reached, you've identified as challenges. You will, it will surprise me if anything in this report surprises you. It will be likely to be things that you already know about, and hopefully, it will be some good ideas that you might want to consider trying.
Well, our high schools going through the accreditation process right now. Does this dovetail at all with that?
It's --
Or is it completely separate from that?
It is completely separate.
I know you're involved in the high school a little bit, so is there any sharing of information? Is there any part of the accreditation that will be involved in that?
We will look at their report. The difference between them, first of all, is that for the district accreditation, the high school accreditation, you are paying for that. For this review, which will encompass the entire district and not just the high school, the Commonwealth is paying for. So, this is not something that's going to cost you any money. It's also something that will be a little bit more encompassing than the high school accreditation process. And it's based on district standards and indicators and the conditions of school effectiveness more than self-study. So it's done third-party, based on data, based on information, and not based on narrative discussion within the school buildings.
Have you started any of the data collection or data analysis yet prior to the site visits?
Yes, and tomorrow when I get back, I will be sending the superintendent a data pack. It's about yay-thick of all of the information that our team will be using to get an idea of where things are in Brockton. It's strictly numbers, it's, it's all stuff that you'll be familiar with. You'll be, you'll have seen it in a number of different presentations, I'm sure, over the course of the year. There'll be things like the DART, which is a spreadsheet that compares your district with other similar districts. There will be profile data from the department website, there'll be information from the Secretary of State's office, the Department of Revenue. Anything that you have sent us, we collect and make sure that our team has read it.
So, you have some dates here on the presentation that I know you had difficulty with, November 18th to the 21st.
That's correct.
Is that the site visit?
That's the site visit.
Okay, so that is less than two weeks away. So where are you in the process of organizing all of these people that you want to interview? How is that, how are people being informed about that, invited to that? With it being less than two weeks away, we're getting to crunch time, I would imagine. I haven't heard anything as a school committee member, so I'm trying to set my calendar, and I'm sure parents want to set their calendars, and, and everyone that you want to interview. So how is that going to be done in timely fashion at this point?
Can I speak to that, please? We met yesterday. Dr. Cancel is heading up this process, you know, for us, to work with the department to prepare. We met yesterday and our executive team, we had our sheets, and we started to plug in all of the people that needed to, you know, needed to be part of the process. So you will be, I think as we speak, they're getting together the letters that are going out to everybody, inviting them, school committee members, students up at the high school, school council members. This time, of course, to sit with, you know, the superintendent, the deputy superintendent. So all of that, it probably was, I want to say, three pages long, and we worked on it for about two hours yesterday. So we'll have that to you. We certainly can have it Friday in your informational packet.
And how are those people being selected, and who is selecting those people?
We actually sat and, you know, tried to have representation from all over the district. When we worked with the school committee, you know, we looked at people's schedules, and we'll certainly give everybody an opportunity. We'll let you know the time so that the school committee can certainly all be included. When we talked about parents, we were trying to think of parents, again, that are involved in the schools and will be able to have information to share with the department. So we sat, and as I said, worked on that yesterday for probably about two hours.
So when can people expect to receive their invitations, I suppose, for lack of a better word?
Monday. I was going to say, I know they're working on it now as we speak. Will they have it out by Monday? Monday's Veterans Day.
Yeah, I would, you know, may over-deliver on this one. I'm hoping, I'd like to talk into eat eatings this evening, that we should be able to have all of this ready to be mailed by Monday, which doesn't, just because it's a holiday doesn't mean that we won't be working. And that it, you know, I would think the people, local people in the city, we get into the Brockton Postal Service, they'll get it by Tuesday, Wednesday. But you have to remember that their invitations were all at that time, but they're, doesn't mean that they're going to be meeting with people on the 18th of the night, it could be towards the end of the week. Because when you get the schedule, when you actually look at it, the names and departments that were penciled in were more of the outside, inside people, the actual, you know, the common inhabitants of the system. So the invitees will be more towards the end of the week, so it'll be at least before the week of notification.
Will any of these meetings be held after work hours?
Yes.
To accommodate people's work schedules?
Exactly what we did.
Are you giving them opportunities to select a time that's convenient for them?
We were pretty much tied in with times when the committee was available, so they gave us times with ranges of time.
However, the team is extremely flexible. In Randolph, I remember four different school committee interviews, and we will make an, make an concerted effort to meet with anyone who wishes to talk to the team. No one has to, but if you wish to, we will be there for you.
Okay. Seems like it's very little time, very little notice for people, and people have very busy lives, they work, they have, and most of the people that you're inviting, they're involved in many other things. So it's, you know, these people have less than a week's notice about these visits and interviews.
I have to say that we deliberately scheduled Brockton early in the district review season because you have a new superintendent, and we thought that getting the review to the Brockton Public Schools as soon as possible will help her in getting her feet on the ground and getting the best purchase for her new position here in Brockton. So, we did do that, and I apologize for the fact that it does put a late notice on folks, but we're going to try to accommodate that by meeting with you at any time that you are available.
Okay.
So, I do apologize, but there was sort of a method in our madness in trying to do this early.
And that being said, the one thing that I will tell you, and I mentioned at the last meeting, we're finishing up our transition team. I've done listening tours all over the district. We're looking forward, after the district review, to start to pull all of this information together after the first of the year, to start to talk about, you know, entry planning and transition planning. So I've asked that this report get here as soon as possible so that we can make use of it.
And it will be prioritized by the department. This is one of those that we're moving right up to the top of the list because you do have a new superintendent, and we do think that this will be helpful to her. So, and to you, but it starts with her.
You mentioned that you will be sharing your findings through recommendations with us, and they are strictly recommendations.
Yes.
So we could ultimately reject all of the findings --
Absolutely.
-- and we could embrace all of the findings. It's our, it's our choice. So as a district, we can decide how we want to utilize the findings. Does the Department of Education utilize the findings in any way at a state level?
No. Once, well, okay. The department itself does not, but working in conjunction with the Brockton Public Schools, the department will provide as much assistance as humanly possible. Humanly possible.
So what would that translate to?
It could translate into any number of things. If there were something that desperately had to be done right now, the department does bring its checkbook occasionally, and school improvement grants are available for certain kinds of things that have to be done. Generally speaking, we'll work with the district, and we'll kind of try to identify priority areas that may be working on now, or that you may have planned for the future. So it's not something that, that the department is coming in and saying, "We are going to hold you accountable for the following things." It's something that we're providing as a service that we believe is helpful and that will be helpful to the folks who are at the department, identifying sources of assistance for Brockton.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your information and answering all of my questions.
And you know, we're very much looking forward to coming and sitting down and having an opportunity to chat with you for an evening.
And just to reiterate, if you could please provide the information on all of the team members in that Friday packet, as well as the site visit schedules, so we can clear our schedules and make ourselves available. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on.
It's my pleasure.
Okay. I want to give you an update on the educator evaluation. One thing that I have done in collaboration with Dr. Moran and Kim Gibson from the BEA is we have provided a timeline, which we will also include in your packet this week, to show you just where we're at in the district. What is going to be happening in the next couple of weeks, you will see statewide. There will be information that will be presented throughout the state about educator evaluations that are happening, findings, percentages of teachers that are found to be proficient, exemplary, needs improvement. What we're -- What we're doing in the district, and we're pleased, is, you all are aware that we bargained and finished the bargaining up last February, very late February, we were able to get training done for district teams, school teams, in late August, three days of training. It was a train-the-trainer model, where they went back to the schools in early September into October, setting the stage for the ed evaluation process to take place in Brockton this year. And when I say "take place in Brockton," I'm talking 100%. That means from the superintendent down to the executive team, to our district administrators, to teachers in the classroom, 100% of our staff will be evaluated this year, and you will be able to see the results that we enter into the EPUMS portal next June. That being said, our teachers right now are doing their self-assessment, they're preparing their goals, we're talking about continued professional development. We had an opportunity last week to visit a district that has already adoptive, adopted one of the ed eval tools. We're starting to look at that, we're looking at districts that have created their own tools, so we very much are on our way to having this, our pilot year, be a success. I'm gonna be looking at, for the district, what I'm calling an accelerated plan, to make sure that there is no stone unturned when we're finished this year. It will have been just that, a pilot year. I feel very strongly, when you talk about ed eval, one of the things that we want it to be is a very positive experience for our educators. It should be a growth model, it should show, again, from our newest educators to our veteran educators, you know, that you have quality educators in the city of Brockton. So we are looking forward to having those results for you at the end of this school year.
Next item, trauma-sensitive schools. Mr. Haley?
Question. Is it possible, the package is to put a quick synopsis of how the ed eval is going forward? You know, I know you're doing the self-assessment and so forth, what's the next step and the next step down the road?
Sure, we can put some information in, I can put the timeline in, so you can see, again, what we've done at this point. I can continue to provide some documents for, one of the things, actually, you heard me talk about this in August. So the process that the teachers are going through, I need to go through as a superintendent. I think we were waiting for our new school committee to be seated, which will happen very soon. I actually just left the conference down the Cape with the school superintendents and the school committees, they're very much talking about all of this. So I look forward to setting up training for our new school committee men, our veteran school committee men, and we will go forward, and I will be the first one that you're able to evaluate with this process. I would love to see us adopt a tool where I could also work with you, and especially a superintendent, so you're able to evaluate the superintendent after every school committee meeting, you know, different initiatives that are happening in the district, the district review process. So again, it's something that, rather than something that happens at the end of the time, it's a continual process that I would like to go through with all of you, and it'll be a pilot for all of us. So I'm looking forward to modeling that for the district with our school committee.
I just think it's important that we need to recognize and know the amount of effort and extra work that it takes to go through this process, because really, we've kind of been left out of that, understandably so, because you guys are just learning it yourselves, so, as soon as you can bring us into the fold, that'd be great.
You know, I think that's a good point, Mr. Haley, is we are learning it ourselves, we're talking continuously about it. I meet with Kim Gibson once a week, Dr. Moran meets with us, you know, we're talking about, you know, there are some concerns, there are some clarifications. We're talking about doing something on the website, such as a frequently asked questions, a newsletter, bringing our staff back again to continue to provide support. So the message is out there, and it needs to be a culture. You know, it can't be a culture that we're worried about the evaluation, we need to support it so that it brings teachers to the next level. That's my goal, I talked about the very first day with every teacher in front of me, that's my feeling continuing forward, that this will support our staff, all of our staff.
Yeah, well, the more knowledge we all have about it, the more easily that task will be attained, certainly. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Next item.
And the next item is the trauma-sensitive schools, and this is something that has been in the district a number of years. We have a very special event going on, I believe it's Thursday, November 14th, and Dr. Sal Torasi, who's been part of this project from day one, will share with us what's happening.
Thank you very much. Brockton Public Schools has been involved in an effort called Helping Traumatized Children Learn since about 2007, and we have partnered with an organization called the Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative, which is an organization which is a partnership between Mass Advocates for Children and the Harvard Law School. And they have, our work over the years has involved trying to obtain some grants for our schools and to get our teachers trained in becoming a little bit more sensitive to the kinds of issues that children affected by trauma bring into the classroom. And trauma is something that's kind of broadly defined as, you know, sort of episodic trauma or basic trauma, when, you know, children are affected by some sort of natural disaster. But it's also a lot more involved than that, there's a thing called complex trauma, which is a kind of deprivation that, you know, children suffer when people in their family are sick over long periods of time, with a physical sickness, a mental illness, death in the family, chronic deprivation, sort of financial kinds of hardships, substance abuse, all kinds of things that affect children's social and emotional well-being. And we've done a lot of work in training our staff in recognizing what the, in coming to understand the causes of trauma, and then in recognizing how that can manifest itself behaviorally in the classroom, and then giving our teachers a set of strategies to deal with that, to, basically, to certainly promote academic achievement, but beyond that, to develop children as whole people, and to attend to their well-being, generally speaking. Along the way, we struck up a relationship with Leslie University, and Brockton Public Schools was very instrumental in actually helping Leslie University to develop graduate-level courses that focused on trauma and its relationship to teaching and learning. We helped them develop the courses, and then they began offering those courses, we sought foundation money for, to offset the cost of some of those courses, and to date, we have trained over 200 of our teachers with graduate-level courses offered via Leslie University. We now have developed a third course, which we're trying to get to culminate in a certificate, sort of a, an educator certificate, and we're working on that. So the long and short of it is that this is initiative that has been ongoing in the Brockton Public Schools for quite some time. And because the Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative has recognized that the Brockton Public Schools has been somewhat of a leader in this across the state, they have asked us if they could have the release of their book announced, and the media event accompanying that, if that could occur at one of our schools, and we've actually planned for that to occur on November 14th at the Baker School. The Baker School happens to be one of our schools which is, has been designated as a trauma-sensitive school. The principal has taken an active role, a leadership role in that regard, has trained staff. And so you all should have received an invitation for that event. We've invited, you know, our school committee people, our legislative delegation, there'll be people coming from Boston and other school districts across the state that have been invited by either Harvard Law School or the Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative. And the book that they have written is, you have a copy of the cover and the table of contents. The book will be out by then, you'll ultimately receive a copy of the book, but right now you have the cover and the table of contents. And it's called Helping Traumatized Children Learn, it's volume two. That will be, that will be released along with a website that we will preview that night. And so we'd like to, you know, make sure that this is on your radar screen, invite you to this event, and also announce that the Secretary of Education will be one of the primary speakers at this, at this event, and his office has been in contact with the Trauma Learning Policy Initiative. They are briefing him on, you know, certain aspects of the project, but quite frankly, he was here for some of that, and is pretty well acquainted with the initiative, so he will be a good person to comment on that, with some degree of personal knowledge. So we're hoping to see you all there, and it's just another way that Brockton has made its mark statewide.
Speaker, but I wonder if we could extend or ask to extend that invitation to perhaps a member of the district attorney's office that deals with juvenile delinquency, if it's not already on that list?
District Attorney's Office is already there.
And CPCS, the Commonwealth Public Council Services on the other side, that represent the children, that sometimes if behavior issues that could be, you know, grow out of a traumatic situation, find their way to the courts, then I think it would be helpful to have the judicial perspective, too.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely try to do that.
Okay, if you'd like, I can reach out to CPCS and ask if they care to send a member.
Yeah, please feel free to do that.
All right.
We'd be happy to have them.
Thanks, Sal. I actually had the opportunity to attend the training at the Baker last spring, and it was, it was great. It was a Saturday all-day event, I think it used volume one of the curriculum. I was able to take it home and really spend some time with it. You can plan on me being there, and certainly I think this is an amazing thing that Brockton is doing. I think it's something that every community in the country should be participating in, quite honestly. And I just, you kind of talked a little bit about the definition of trauma, and I think oftentimes when we think about trauma, we think about something really bad happening, violence in the home, severe substance abuse issues, a death in the family. Trauma could be as simple, and in fact, one of the situations that they talked about and described at the training was a kid who just saw a late-night news story.
Right.
And, and just, young people, especially our youngest and most vulnerable students, they haven't developed coping mechanisms yet to deal with, you know, the death of a pet, or a conversation that they misunderstand that their parents have at the dinner table, or something they hear on the school bus on the way home. And so you're talking about the most severe types of trauma, and you're talking about kind of, in some cases, simple traumas that kids come to school with that can be resolved before they even leave the school that day. If we have teachers and classroom instructors and schools who are bought into recognizing and understanding the trauma and addressing it, oftentimes they can alleviate kind of the, some of the behavioral issues that manifest that day, make parents aware of it, and allow it to be addressed, and help kids move on from it very quickly. And in some cases, it's about finding resources to support a family or a student long-term deal with significant trauma issues. And so I just, you know, especially for the folks at home, I think, most of our kids experience
Something.
Various levels of trauma.
Right.
Most of them don't experience really severe trauma, but almost all of them experience some kind of trauma.
Some degree, you're absolutely right, I couldn't agree more. I mean, there have been several government, I mean, studies that have been sponsored by federal government, which indicate that in the course of a student's school-age career, you know, K to 12, that at least 20% of students, so that's one in five students, at some point in their career have a diagnosable condition, emotional condition. And that could be due to the death of a family member, or a hospitalization, or something like that, and it's a temporary sort of short-lived thing, but yet it's real. And that, that's one in five, and that's a diagnosable condition. That doesn't even take into account the much greater percentage of students that never reached that point of being diagnosable, but still have some level of trauma that is in some way affecting their school performance and their development as a person. So it's a real issue.
Yeah, and so you're talking about a program that doesn't just serve a very small population of our students. It's really, when implemented correctly, a population that has the potential to serve almost every one of our students at some point in time or in some way.
By the way, I'd like to add that when you say, "And it's something that every school district should be doing," you know, please know that there has been ongoing legislation, you know, at the state level, and several of us in Brockton have been asked on a couple of occasions to provide testimony, and we have. And it comes under the, what we're calling trauma-sensitive schools is being translated in the legislation as safe and supportive school environments.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of one of those things that maybe helps people understand it better, is a context like that. But also, in relation to the PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Interventions that we're implementing, they partner and marry so well, and I think support each other, which is a great thing, too.
Absolutely.
So I just think this is an amazing thing, and certainly anything I can do to continue to support and help this.
Well, we really thank you for your support in all of this.
Please, let me know.
Thanks, Sal. It was a great presentation, I'm looking forward to going to the Baker on the 14th. You mentioned that the Baker School is designated as a trauma-sensitive school, or I actually liked the other, the other phrase, of safe and supportive schools, which I think all of our schools should ideally have that designation. But at this point, how many of our schools have the comprehensive training that gives them that designation?
Our schools are at various levels of development. You know, there is no official designation as a trauma-sensitive school, but for example, the principal of the Baker, and formerly when he was at the Angelo, he made it a point to train all of his staff in this. Now, there are other schools that are at levels where some of their staff have taken courses because they have been interested in it, but it hasn't necessarily permeated the entire staff. What we're trying to do, as I alluded to earlier, we're trying to work to a point where we could actually get some sort of a certification, a certificate, that would designate a school in which maybe, say, 80 or 85% of the staff have reached a certain level, a certain criterion of training, to be designated officially as a trauma-sensitive school. And we're trying to partner with a university to do that. We haven't gotten there yet, but we're really working very closely toward that.
So by obtaining that goal, how do you see that, that particular school helping our district, die that designation?
Well, one of the things that happens is that there is, as part of the IST process, the student planning process, there is a way of looking at children through sort of a domains-based lens, and when schools implement that domains-based planning process, they sort of take into account all of the various aspects that are, you know, encompassed in the book, in developing an approach to working with a given child or family. And, you know, we're making good strides toward that end. And as Mr. Robinson said, you know, whether it's Helping Traumatized Children Learn, PBIS, collaborative problem solving, all of these things actually work together in a nice way, and so we're making good progress, but, you know, we're not there yet, and neither is anybody else in the state.
Right.
But at least we've made the commitment to move in that direction.
And I certainly do applaud that. I know you've been working on this for several years, and it's really great, the progress that you've made, and not only helping our district, but other districts by working with the universities, and, you know, help and creating these graduate courses.
I can tell you that my office specifically has been contacted by the Reading Public Schools, Plymouth Public Schools, and Cambridge, because they're looking to emulate what has happened in Brockton.
So is it safe to say that the ultimate goal is for all of our schools to ultimately be safe and supportive schools?
Yeah, absolutely, and that's why we support the legislation, too.
Great, thank you again, Sal.
Just quickly, Tony, in response to your, I wrote a note, the training that I was at last year, that Principal Powers put on, Nancy Leiberg and Ed Jacobs, Nancy Leiberg from the Brockton Police Department, Ed Jacobs from this DA's office, actually shared a piece of that training. You know, Officer Leiberg talking about some of the specific things that we struggle with here in Brockton, in terms of trauma in the home, and things that our kids are exposed to in their neighborhoods, and Ed Jacobs obviously, you know, understanding it from the kind of court-side perspective. And I think about half the day was the two of them presenting kind of a local picture of what it looks like, and then obviously the folks working through the curriculum with the teachers the second half of that day. So they're very active, at least in my experience so far, with the implementation of this.
And while my office has taken a great interest in that, of course, this is all part of Mrs. Barry's plan for non-academic supports. So, you know, her office is working simultaneously on So, you know, her office is working simultaneously on academic supports and non-academic supports for children. So this is really part of a much larger plan for the Brockton Public Schools that comes out of teaching and learning.
Just, excuse me?
I called on you.
Oh, thank you. I did. I did. I wanted to say a couple of things. I do, in addition, it occurred to me, do we have anyone from the Brockton School Police who, would it be helpful to, for them to attend?
Well, Nancy Leiberg has been invited to that.
Okay, so she...
There'll be about 120 people total.
But Nancy is not school police, is she, or is she? So perhaps if, you know, Lieutenant Mills wanted to designate somebody, perhaps it wouldn't hurt. And I'd still reach out to the CPCS, because I think the more people you have, we've had some pretty fascinating conversations about this. But the last thing, too, is of course, I think, you know, for whatever it's worth, designating a school as trauma-sensitive might not be a good idea. I think the goal, as Mrs. Joyce said, just making the district trauma-sensitive, because you don't want to identify a school, hey, it did send kids to that school, and say, oh, they've experienced trauma and all that other
We've even now begun
Confidentiality issues.
Beginning to take the position that trauma-sensitive is a bit of a, it works, but it's a bit of a misnomer. We actually prefer the safe and supportive school
Yeah.
Nomenclature.
Right. Which, that's, any school ought to be that.
Okay.
Done. Can you believe it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrassi.
Excellent.
Next items to refer to, subcommittee. I know, Mr. Carpenter, you wanted to say something, a request?
There was some discussion at a previous, most recent finance subcommittee meeting on post-creating a maintenance position related to the cafeterias and being able to fund that out of our food service accounts. So I know that Mrs. Joyce and a couple other members had some ongoing, were requesting some additional information. This is kind of a crossover issue, because this has also been a topic at facilities. So it kind of intertwines both subcommittees. So I would like to schedule a facilities subcommittee meeting to ask Mr. Thomas and Mr. Petronio to be available to answer questions of school committee members. And what I'll do is I'll ask one to reach out to the entire school committee and make sure we schedule that subcommittee meeting at a time that is agreeable to everyone on the committee, so the full committee can be available to, if they would like to attend and ask any specific questions. So that's my request.
Okay. Any other item? Anyone? Mr. Healy? Great. Mr. Healy?
I would request that the Chair of Building and Engineering Committee also ask that we schedule a subcommittee meeting, because I am ready. I'm ready with what I put together.
Seeing as it's the same members, we could do it on the same night, if that's okay with Mr. Healy.
Yeah.
We could put that one earlier to be more, to make sure the other one's more available to everybody. Very well. Be happy to do that.
Anyone else?
I just want to bring to your attention, next Tuesday night, I will be out of the district, but you will have a presentation for the Curriculum Subcommittee on the update. You had a presentation last year on, from the Office of Teaching and Learning, on Park, on the Common Core, on the initiatives happening in the district. I want to tell you how proud I was today at your conference for the school committee and the superintendents. You had both Dr. Heather Ronan presenting as a Park Fellow. She's one of, I think, 24 in the state. You also had Elizabeth Barry presenting. Liz did an excellent job. I was really pleased to partner with her today. We presented about the HR Pilot Project. We talked about organizational structures. We talked about professional development happening in the district. So we're very fortunate as a district to have these people presenting statewide.
Mrs. Joyce?
I have just one question on the curriculum meeting. I have it in my calendar, but out of the location or final time, have we finalized that yet?
I thought it was 7:00 at the R. No.
R. No. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, any unfinished business? Seeing no unfinished business, we move to new business. The Finance Subcommittee of October 29th, the Finance Subcommittee of the Brockton Public Schools held a meeting on Tuesday, October 29th, 2013, at the Little Theater at the R. No. at 7:00 p.m. At that time, the superintendent presented a proposed Brockton Public Schools reorganizational chart that she, along with the executive team, drafted to effectively realign the departments in the district. The superintendent explained that when she came into her position, it was evident that realignment of some positions, along with filling some vacant positions, was necessary for student achievement. There was also discussion about non-union salary ranges and the need for some expert advice with regard to salaries, and independent analysis to review and make recommendations to the district and the school committee about ranges, so that any decisions that would be made by us would be based upon factual information. The committee then voted to move the proposed organizational chart forward to the full school committee for its ratification. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
To approve those minutes?
Second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Very good. All right. And seeing that we've approved those minutes, we would then need a motion to adopt the proposed Brockton Public School reorganizational chart as presented and modified at our meeting. Mr. Healy, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Anything that anyone would like to bring up at this time that we have not covered under this other business? Mr. Donigan?
I should probably just leave it to you, Mr. Vice Chair. Hold my thoughts.
One item that I wanted to discuss was last weekend over at the Mary Baker, there was a technology conference that was open and voluntary for all of our staff, our certified staff, our non-certified staff, and the cafeteria was full. I went over just to basically say hello and express the gratitude on behalf of the school committee that people were taking advantage of getting up to speed on some of the tools that we have to offer here, and some of the vendors were assisting, and our staff internally, our technology staff was doing a great job of presenting and assisting. It was very impressive to see a full cafeteria on a voluntary basis on a Saturday morning. So I'm very pleased with that, and I just wanted to make sure they knew that we all appreciated that. Would you like to say something about it?
I believe it's the second year. I attended last year and this year, and as Mr. Minicello said, you know, it's very, very powerful to know what was happening Saturday with all of the offerings that were going to then take place in those classrooms on Monday morning. So this is, again, one of those things that you're just very proud to come from the Brockton Public Schools, when you know our technology department has been working for months on putting this together. I know there were people invited, actually, people in other districts asking to be part of it, and we've certainly opened it up to them. You had a number of vendors that were sponsoring the breakfast and the lunch, and it was a great way for teachers, again, to come together, and it wasn't just teachers, MTA's, paraprofessionals, people from all over the district, you know, took the opportunity to attend the technology conference, and we'll make sure everybody is invited, everybody's invited to it. So again, thank you to our Katie Buckley, Dan Vigent, and our whole technology department.
Great. I would also like to point out and welcome Ray Henningson and Alicia Clark, who were elected to the school committee and will be joining us in January. Also elected was Judy Sullivan, who I spoke to today and will be coming to our next meeting. But congratulations to the two of you, and welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you, and all of us on the school committee, even those members that might be leaving are pretty generous, and I'm sure it would help in any way, shape, or form if you were to reach out to any of us. So we'll make sure that you are treated right, and we've already requested that materials be forwarded to you. I have some materials for you tonight after the meeting. I'd love to give them to you. Without further ado, I think I'd like to introduce our new mayor-elect of the city of Brockton, Mr. Bill Carpenter. It's going to be, obviously, a new experience working with Bill as the Chair. I would like to say that our present mayor has done a superb job with all of us and certainly has supported the schools and has always been a champion of Brockton. So to Mayor Balzotti, we all express our respect and admiration to as well. So anyone else would like to add anything this evening? Mr. Healy?
I hope I will be, have the opportunity to speak to the mayor, when he, mayor-elect, when he becomes mayor with the same candor that I do now. Very well, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you all for attending. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you for coming.